Okay, and this morning's prayer will be given by?
Kevin Guffey.
Kevin Guffey. Thank you, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this time that we gathered together. We thank you for our city. We thank you for those who serve. We thank you for our city council. We thank you for all those who who serve as just public servants in our community. We thank you for our citizens. Father, we pray special protection over this meeting today. Lord, we invite the fruit of the Spirit into this room. No matter what we believe, we all benefit when we invite your love and your joy, your peace, your patience, your kindness, and your goodness, and your faithfulness, your gentleness, and self-control into this room. So, Father, as we meet, we pray that we will see people and not problems, that we will listen, that we will seek to understand before we seek to be understood. And, Lord, may your presence be here today, and may you be glorified. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for Family Day.
Okay, could I please have Brianna Keller with Rise Up Reno join me at the podium? Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the misuse of alcohol and nicotine constitute the greatest threats to the well-being of America's children; and whereas 21 years of surveys conducted by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse, CASA, at Columbia University have consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs; and whereas frequent family dining is associated with lower rates of teens smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drug misuse; and whereas the correlation between frequent family dinner and reduced risk for teen substance misuse is well documented; and whereas parents who are engaged in their children's lives through such activities as frequent family dinners are less likely to have children who misuse substances; and whereas family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family connection in America; now, therefore, I, Jade Pyros de Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the Fourth Monday of every September as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Brianna Keller. I am with Rise Up Reno Prevention Network. Our agency uses and encourages proven ways to help our local youth avoid substance misuse. We also educate the community on safe mental health practices and suicide prevention. Today, I have with me Emma, Ellie, and Courtney, who are members of our Youth Leadership Program. On behalf of Rise Up Reno, I would like to thank you for recognizing Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, as an important holiday in our community. When families come together for meal times, it creates a foundation of connection and acceptance for their children. It also gives families the opportunity to teach their children problem-solving skills, resulting in lesser chance of substance misuse and negative risk-taking. Overall, youth from families who share meal times five to seven times a week have 15% fewer symptoms of depression and are more likely to be emotionally content, motivated, and involved in their education. I have personally spent lots of time researching and collecting information on the positive impacts of consistent family dinners. I was shocked and inspired that something I viewed as nonessential was actually extremely beneficial and carries countless advantages for my child's future. Family connections matter. Family meal times matter. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Courtney, and this is important to me because I feel supported by my family when we spend quality time together. For me personally, I take a lot of IB courses, and I'm a student athlete, so it's really hard to find time with my family where we can just sit down and have a conversation or have a nice meal together. So, we have to cherish the little time we have. And scheduling with work, school, and sports is very difficult, especially with big families. So, to have a day to just sit down and put all of our stress aside from our crazy lives would be really beneficial for us, and it would help us a lot.
Support from my family can look many... Support from family can look many different ways and different for lots of different people. My name is Ellie Foose, and for me, support from my family is simply my family being present in my life. That looks like coming to my tennis meets and cheering me on. It's knowing my little brother is at home to play games with me and make me laugh. It's getting dad jokes from my dad all day long. And it's knowing my mom is at home at the end of the day to give me a hug and talk about my day. When my family spends time together, even if we are in the same room doing different things, it's knowing that they are there for me whenever I need them, and that's how they support me. So, this day, just knowing that there's a day where families can support each other, it's really great.
My name is Emma Craft. I feel supported by my family when they come to like my band and choir concerts, or when we just show up in general and we go and watch my sister at her competitions. Being from a family that's like constantly having something to do because the two oldest siblings are constantly not at home, it's really stressful trying to find like time to spend together, and it would be nice where we have a day where we can just take a break and like relax and just kind of hang out and play games and stuff like we do.
Thank you all for coming this morning.
Okay, so Courtney and Ellie are going to be handing out a flyer. So, this... This week? This week, Rise Up Reno is doing a family photo contest where we'd like to invite you to take part in it on social media to, you know, to send in like you guys eating dinner with your families. There'll be a prize package of $100, or $100 value will be given away next week. So, for more information, check out our Facebook page or our website at riseupreno.org.
Thank you so much, and we'll try to get our communications person to put this on our city Facebook page so everybody has the tag for the contest. Thank you again. Okay, next item, please.
Item 5A, update on the 30th and Lucille traffic study.
Jeff Shank, engineering. Well, we received a... We had them do a quick scope and fee to do an analysis, to do a full analysis of the intersection. It'll be about $16,000, just over $16,000. They can do the traffic count for, it's just over four, just right around $4,000. If we want to, we can proceed with doing another traffic count, personally looking at it and just kind of going through everything in the different meetings. I think a more effective option were our benefit would maybe not doing another traffic count. I mean, we have done, there have been two. There's been an independent traffic count by Kansas Department of Transportation, and then we performed our traffic count, which verified all of their same data. Looking at it, I think a more efficient thing would be to go out. We did a speed study. We did an additional 10-day or two-week study of speeds in that area. We can also take and put out signs that show people's speeds to see if we can get people to reduce that more in line with what the general speed, the speed limit is, because I think a lot of complaints were that people are traveling extremely fast. It's hard to gauge when you can get out and jump out through the intersection. So, if we can get another sign out there showing people's speeds and then do another speed study to see if that does bring speeds more in line with the speed limit and kind of break that variance of speeds up, and then maybe even wait a couple weeks after we get done with that study and get rid of the signs, do another study, see if that doesn't... See if the speeds didn't either stay low, like that was a good education thing. People started realizing where the speed limit signs were. Or if you start seeing the speeds start to climb again, maybe then you start looking at the warrant for those speed limit signs like they have over in Haven where it's, you know, the red, and it goes to the green when it gets closer. But those are just kind of things that we're looking at. So, I guess, if you have any questions or recommendations for moving forward.
So, Jeff, are the speed studies just done internally, so there's not a lot of cost involved with those? Is that what you mean?
Yep. We have traffic counters that just aren't being used. They count traffic and speed. And so, unless they're out, they're just sitting in an office. So, just putting them out, it has no additional cost.
So, you think that would be more effective at kind of that behavior modification on the speeding side than just doing another study?
Right. I think that was what we heard a lot of was that there was a lot of concern about speed in that intersection, and there was a lot of concern about, you know, trying to dodge people that are coming. And then even when Jim Tobobin was here, and he discussed like, the closer that the speeds stay together, the easier it is for you to gauge when to jump in and out of cars. So, if we can do something to help bring those speeds closer together, I think that's a more realistic way of helping navigate that intersection.
Thank you. Council's thoughts or questions?
Yes, I got a lot to say about this being a former traffic signal technician. My point of view is I didn't want to spend any money on this. We got the stuff in style already. You can go ahead and put those lights on base time system where they come on the time you need, and they go off when you put them on flash. As far as this car's going down, you're gonna have lights up there. They'll be on yellow flash. Put signs ahead saying "traffic lights ahead," slows your speed down. Don't spend that much money, and you take care of two problems. The lights will stay on, the lights will flash, the cars see the signs ahead and say "traffic lights ahead, slow down." That's pretty simple and expensive. We already got the poles up, we already got the equipment, and the controllers will do the job. Trust me, I know that. You can take your flash circuit and put a time clock in it. Doesn't cost anything. Put a flash, and it will turn your lights off. Put them on flash at the times you want it to do. I don't think we need to be spending $16,000 or $4,000 or more on studies or anything like that. We already have the system. Now, if that system don't work where you have it on flash, your traffic lights are high on the pole, the lights are flashing, put the signs ahead saying "traffic lights in front, slow the traffic down," tell them that we have traffic lights in front, and the sign to tell them to slow the traffic down. And that's my point of view. I've been thinking about this. You have the equipment, use them. So, and it doesn't gonna cost you anything. If it doesn't seem to cause more problems, try this idea or whatever idea. If it doesn't seem to do, then we go to another route. I'm not really inclined to spend $16,000 or another $4,000 on a study. We need the money other ways. So, that's my point of view. So, that's what I think. And you have the equipment to do it, use them.
Thank you.
All right. Just leave them up, put them on time-based system. We have a time clock to do it, or you can do it by controller, one or two. That's one thing I do know is traffic lights.
Right.
Any other thoughts or direction to staff?
I don't want to spend money on a study for $16,000 when that could go towards...
A solution.
A solution.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think we've done enough studying.
Mike, I think where I'm at is, do we want to take a stepped approach, or do we just want to jump all in? Well, I wouldn't say jump all in, but go with a more aggressive solution, like what Mr. Garza was pointing out.
The difference you're gonna have, you're gonna put stop sign, I mean, not stop sign, but traffic head signs above where the traffic is coming. Your lights are already 50 feet in the air. The people gonna see the lights flashing. So, I mean, then you got the sign says "slow traffic down, traffic lights ahead." So, when you do need them and the bus is back up, traffic lights will catch it. Traffic lights will give them a green. They'll turn. You turn that timing down to a seven-second green, three-second yellow, all-clearant red. It's not gonna be on that much. I mean, they'll be on for a short period of time on your time-based system, and then it goes back to flash. Someone said I'm wrong, but we'll see. But that's the way I think you should handle it. And then if it doesn't work, if we still having problems, we'll come back and look at it. But I'm not willing to spend this kind of money on a study. That's my, that's how I feel.
Are you saying like they would be operating during school hour time?
No, they'd be on flash during school time. Say you want the lights to come on, say you want it to come on eight o'clock in the morning. The time base will turn the controller on, she'll go to regular normal operation. She'll run the traffic for you, and then say you run it, take it off at eight o'clock. When traffic goes down, she goes back to flash mode, back to flash, and she won't come on to, if you want to run in the afternoon, she'll come back, come on to on position where the lights will work for traffic, get the traffic cleared. They'll go back to a flash. Your signs are out there.
Is it like just a yellow flash?
Yellow flash, and red flash on your B-side intersection. B-side is your side coming off the T. And it will hand, it's just come, it's doing both situations. The people don't like the lights backing up, okay? Well, you're not gonna be on. They'll be on flash. The yellow's just for people traveling all the time, and the red's people that's gotta stop on the T intersection. They gotta stop. It's got, it's like a stop sign, just like putting a stop sign in. But you do have the lights when you need them, when the lights back up, when the lights need them, and the buses are there. They'll come in, they do their job to a certain amount of time, and then they go back to flash. There's no cost. There's no, little cost for technicians to put the lights back up, but we got them anyway. So, but the cheapest way is doing is put a time clock in your flash circuit. That's easy. You don't have to program the programmer or nothing like that. So, that's what I, we do it all the time. We do it during the fair. Your fair is on flash. At the daytime, when we have fair hours, boom, they go to back to your cycling business, and they come back off. As far as the warrants are concerned, we've done traffic lights without warrants. We just have to, us have to make a decision. I know we're taking a little thing over there at the football game. We had problems there. We had a person got killed. Now, I don't want this to happen to us here. We get somebody killed, and then we move to, put traffic lights back up. We had somebody get killed. They got killed. We put the lights up. It's working great over there at the football stadium. We got the, what they call the Hawk system. Hawk system went on, get people good across the street, worked beautiful. But that's the way I see it, and that's the way I would say we should do it.
I think it's a fair compromise.
Hmm? I think...
I think it's a fair compromise if it works during warrants needed, and then you're yielding.
So, there was some concern in engineering studies that say that there's some danger to flipping back and forth between flashing to active.
During the fair time.
Well, that's one traffic, or those two signals that's right by a very volatile amount of traffic. I mean, that is an extremely busy route that you have to moderate. And I don't know what studies were doing, went through to determine that those were the traffic signals that were best used for that during the fair. But I do know that there's concern sometimes, at least that's what Jim had talked about, with switching back and forth is it's less safe when you decrease consistency, because when somebody is approaching the intersection, it's different knowing what is going on to when it's kicking on or when it's kicking off.
These traffic lights, or known traffic light, you know all the traffic lights in town. You know what lights do, what at what time. They get used to it. The only time it might be a dangerous people out of town, but you got signs up there saying "traffic lights ahead." That's how you warn them. Traffic lights ahead. And then they're coming down the street, they see the yellow lights flashing.
And then the other, the other aspect of what you're talking about is not, I mean, if it's an experiment or whatever they are recommending, then that is one thing. But if, as far as the signal poles, those poles are on lease for timbre, as temporaries. They're actually the siren poles. One of them, we're needing to replace a siren pole. Whenever those come down, one of those is already going. There's not permanent infrastructure that's there. That's probably gonna cost about $350,000.
As far as that's concerned, we get steel poles in the backyard and the traffic poles. Put them in concrete, set them. You got a traffic division that can do the job. Dig the holes, set the steel poles, and we don't, they don't cost us anything.
Kate, I'd have to go back, but I think KDOT just changed the standards. I don't know that we have any poles that meet the new standards and warrants, so we probably would need new poles. They also changed the depths that is required, and our Derek doesn't quite dig to those depths right now.
Excuse me, changed what?
The depths of the concrete anchors. And so, there's some things to look at there. Also, another thing that was talked about was that they don't believe that the stacking is proper for a traffic signal. So, if we were to go with the traffic signal, we would still need to do a study, because they believe that our dimensions aren't proper. The left-turn lane, for example, turning north, they believe it's too short for a traffic signal, and it's improper. So, we would actually need to look at a street widening project as well, along with the traffic signals, if we decided to go with them.
If I say we do it for a little bit, try this idea. If it doesn't work, then we'll go back to widening the streets or whatever we got. I'm not intending to spend the money on this when you got the tools right here to try it for a little while, especially with the signs and your lights flashing up above. I mean, that's my opinion. I don't know what the other council thinks.
I think that immediately, I think we should be putting radar signage, speed limit signage, to the east of that intersection to slow traffic coming into town. That's something we can do immediately that doesn't need to, I think that's part of the solution, whether we go traffic light or not.
Yes, sir.
I don't see a reason why we need to wait on that.
Radar, how's the radar gonna?
Well, it shows you your speed as you're coming in, so you slow down.
There's traffic lights that do that, poles that do that.
Right. I mean, I think of going into Lyons, and it always flashes at me, because I'm usually speeding coming into town. I slow down.
I'll do those traffic poles, instead of pulling the traffic head sign. That's a good idea. I would do that.
I don't see why we need to wait on that part of the solution, if that's part of the solution either way.
Right.
On slowing traffic down.
And I do have those reserved for October 6th to go in.
It seems like putting up new poles and going with that solution is gonna be far more costly than the 416. I mean, that's gonna be pretty expensive, isn't it?
Doing the...
If we put up new poles.
Yes. Yeah.
Not that, not the cost is the consideration necessarily. We just need to be aware.
Right. Yes. If, like I said, the new signal poles, I think we're looking at in the ballpark of about $350,000. These have to be set back a little bit further from the road. They have to be a little bit taller than standard, what we typically have in town. And then we have to look at the new signals that we're putting in, and we're trying to go with a more uniform signal. So, we're looking at different receivers and everything right now. Then on top of that, if you start looking at widening the streets, and then you have to talk with, I think, may have to have a conversation with the township and what they would want to do on the north side of Lucille, or the north side of the intersection, because I think it's probably, it's gonna be quite expensive. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, your recommendation is to move forward with these speed counters. See if we can get people to lower their speeds. Go back in a few weeks, reassess, and then move from there.
And have a radar thing that's...
We'll have one on both, I'd have one on both the east and the west by both speed limit signs, because the goal is to get people up to the 45 coming out and down to 45, so that way you're looking at a consistent.
And is this gonna be a gigantic sign, or is it gonna be the little thing underneath the speed?
It'll be a big sign right now. We have those.
Okay. We don't have the others.
No. We would have to purchase those other ones, but before we would buy those signs that are more permanent, like I said, the ones going into Haven, I think, the one in Lyons, and then several in Iowa, that you'd want to kind of verify that that is something that it is, we could show that there is a result, that there is something attainable.
Well, Steve, I appreciate your knowledge about this stuff. I just have trouble reconciling recommendations from an engineer that, you know, has been doing that for 40 years, and they've done these studies. I think if we take, you know, one step at a time, and I believe Ms. Couchman even said she didn't think a light was necessary there, but she said something is necessary there. And I don't know if the bus drivers agree with that or not, but I think, I mean...
Mike, one, you are doing something. You're putting advanced signs telling people to slow down.
You bet. I would be all for that. I think, you know, we could, we could have several of those signs for the money we would spend redoing that intersection and trying to, I mean...
We don't have to cross this bridge now, but the only concern I'd have with going into the extent of redoing the intersection, are we trading one set of problems for another set of problems?
Correct.
And spending the money to buy different problems.
Well, yeah, and I think that if we put the lights up, those were...
There's always a challenge getting your kids to school. I think everybody feels it. As a somebody who drives their kids to school, I'm always, it takes me forever to... As a somebody who drives their kids to school, I'm always, it takes me forever to get cross intersections. And, and I go through probably five intersections every morning and they don't have turn lanes. You have to squeeze in and sometimes you have to wait three traffic rotations. Because it, there's so much traffic coming that there's no way to get over before the light turns red again. And then you have to wait. And then you have to go at the very, so there's probably only one or two cars that gets across while it's yellow.
But that can be fixed.
Well, no, what I'm saying is through the whole-
Right.
City, I think taking our kids to school in the morning, I goes through four or five and it's just hard, it's just hard. And you have to contend with what it is. I mean, we don't have bus systems in town, so the parents, us, are the drivers, we're not, we don't have bus drivers. You keep, we don't have a bus system, parents are drivers. And we contend with that every morning and it's just an inconvenience, um, but you gotta get your kids to school in time and it, it can be very frustrating, but-
What, what makes sense to me is getting that speed consistent, whatever that speed is. I think the problem is you've got some people driving forty miles an hour and you've got some driving fifty-five. And to me, that makes a lot of sense, if you have the spacing the same, more people are driving the speed limit, then that gives maybe more openings for the left-hand turn, really the left-hand turn is what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
East on the thirtieth.
I have a question regards to the KDOT standards. Do we have to meet KDOT standards if we're not getting grant money from KDOT for this intersection?
No, you would have to have a, I've had this conversation a little bit internally because we had a different traffic signal we just installed. Um, we don't have to meet KDOT. What we have to do is get another engineer to give us a standard that says this will work there. And I haven't found one yet that does it just do what KDOT says.
Okay.
I've called a couple because we just wanted to see, because they were just saying, well, it's a standard and they have materials and research department. They've had, they've had either failures or whatever it was that came to them getting to the conclusions that they've come to, so, uh, yeah.
Do you remember what the KDOT standard is for the depth, what it is?
I do not.
Deeper than the Dirks we have?
Huh?
Deeper than the Dirks we have?
Oh, yeah. But when I was there, we, KDOT was eight foot, we, naturally, when I was there, we did ten foot. We put them in ten foot deep. So, we were beyond KDOT standards already, it might be fourteen now, I don't know.
I think it's fourteen, but I don't know, I don't know that for a hundred percent fact.
All right.
So, I guess, how would you like, I recede with this, that way I know what to-
Get the speed things up.
Yeah, that's-
Speed radars.
Do what you're recommending for now and see if that gets the speed more consistent and gets it down below that forty-six point three, what is it, eighty-five percent? Or ninety-five percent are driving that speed?
Or even more so consistent on your max and your minimum speeds.
Right.
Bring those, bring that, shrink that down back to six or forty-five, that's what we're going for.
I don't think the speed is just one problem, the school bus drivers getting into the school, you're not going to resolve it there. Traffic lights will. I don't think that the speed is a one problem, you have a couple of problems. One is the speed, I grant you that, but the biggest turns, left turn corridor going in there and getting these school buses safe across in that intersection. That's my point of view.
Yeah.
I went out there and watched it, I looked at it when we had the lights. Speed is a problem, I got, grant you that. But the left turn, getting these school bus drivers safely turning, and their bus, what's your buses, seven, eight, ten feet wide? Long one, are they twenty-some feet long?
Twenty.
Huh?
I think it was twenty.
I think you guys were speeding with gloves on trying to hit that left turn, go that way with that long bus like that.
It's scary.
I understand. And the only way you're going to fix that is have a traffic light, will the detonate it left turn going in there? And then you only have it on a couple of, an hour or two a day.
Steve, I appreciate that, but I do think that there's consensus among the council to accept the recommendation and move forward in a couple of weeks after further, further s- speed studies. Is, is that what the council's directing staff, the majority of the council?
Yes.
Because we just need to move off center and give you some direction, right?
Yes.
So, when can we expect an update on the speed study?
Well, they, with the, I don't remember, they have the signals out somewhere right now, then they're going to the rod run, right after the rod one. I believe it's October sixth, they'll be going out to thirtieth. So, at that time, we'll run a two-week speed study, um, will simultaneous with those signs up. And then we'll, after that, we'll take, wait two, we'll take them down, wait two weeks and then run another two-week study just to see what happens again without them going, just to see, like I said, if the education of just realizing, like I'd never really paying attention, you just zoom into town every day and you get a little bit closer before you let off the gas pedal. Uh, and then it's like, oh, yeah, it's right there and just the education is enough. Because then two weeks later, if they're still going, maintaining that, that narrower speed gap, then it shows that, hey, just reminding them that this is where the speed limit sign is enough. Now, if you start seeing those speed limits start to climb right away, then you'd want to look at something that's probably more of a permanent, like a sign with a flasher that says, hey, you know, let's keep it, don't forget.
Yeah.
It just has to be a cost.
I'm curious how much those signs are, just because I'm a curious guy.
I haven't, uh, haven't pulled those yet, but that is, I'm curious as to what those cost as well. Because that, and then they have the ones, I think, with the solar panels, and so I'm interested in, yeah.
Is there any kind of signings we could put up that says like watch for school buses or approaching school intersection or bus crossing or?
I mean, I've seen large trucks entering intersection signs before, I don't know why you wouldn't have something like that.
Just to let people know coming up, like, you might, you might have to slow down even more because we have a, we've got buses crossing coming up. So, I know that there's school bus zone signs you can get, like big giant yellow school bus sign zone, school bus crossings, watch for school bus signs, school bus-
Maybe even with the flashing li- lights around it that come, I know that we're treading on thin water here with, with, or thin ice with-
I know.
With the, uh, schools zone, we don't want to make it a school zone, but certainly-
Right, we can definitely see what kind of warrants are out there for when, when it's appropriate to have a school bus. So, if there's some sort of a school bus sign that kind of announces like, hey, be aware of school buses inside of this area. We can see what kind of warrants are typically met before those would be installed.
Just so people know, like, you could be zooming in right into the side of a school bus if you don't chill out.
Yeah. Okay.
So, could we expect that, are you, are you saying October eighteenth through November first?
I would, I would say right now, and I'll let you know if it changes, but I would plan on having an update probably the first, what's, what's the first council meeting in November?
November one.
November one.
Mm-hmm.
I can try and have it November one.
Okay, and you'll include-
If it's going to push for any reason, I'll shoot an email out and it'll be, it'll be the second in November.
And then you'll have the cost estimates for the signage as well, okay?
All right.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item five B, update on the atrium.
Uh, good morning, uh, council members, Gary Meeger, interim city manager.
I'm sitting in the audience, just one sec.
Oh, yeah, we haven't started public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I think that last meeting I wasn't, uh, here, but I believe there was a question that came up about the, uh, atrium building. A citizen had some questions about that. I, I don't know specifically what, uh, those questions might relate to. But, uh, I did ask the, the chief to be here today, Chief Hooper, maybe talk about, uh, some of the issues he has. I can tell you that, um, Izzy Rivera was going to be here today, was unable to make it. He was going to give a little bit of a, uh, uh, report on what his department has been doing. I know that, uh, this year, uh, his department has, uh, contacted a contractor to, uh, board up, uh, different portions of the building uh, in May, in July, August, and I think, uh, last week there was a request. These reports primarily have come from the police department who have had reports of people getting into the building. And, uh, so, uh, when those reports come in, um, the, uh, building, uh, department will contact the contractor, make sure that those get boarded up so we can keep people out of, and then that is billed to the, uh, to the, uh, owner of the property.
And has there been any communication with the owner?
Other than the, uh, uh, bills or the invoices that go to him, that's the only, uh, communication that I'm aware of. Uh, Izzy may have, uh, a little bit more information, but in, in talking with staff, I think that's primarily the, uh, reports or the communication that they've had.
Yeah, I would encourage Izzy to push a little harder. I, I know that he's unable to, we're unable to force anyone to do anything. Um, but we need a timeline on when that property is going to be brought up to some level of acceptable standards. And, um, if he's unwilling to, to provide that, maybe we just start down the path of, you know, demolition or what are, what are staff's thoughts?
Well, uh, in talking with Izzy, at this point, I believe that structurally the building is sound.
Okay.
It's just the, the fact that it-
The surroundings?
The, the, people getting into the building is an attractive nuisance, you might say, uh, so people are getting into the building and doing whatever. Uh, yeah, you know, I, in talking, I don't, maybe, uh, Mr. Brown can speak to a, any past, uh, complaints or ac- activity in municipal court, but currently I believe there is none, uh, no filings in, in municipal court.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Good morning, um, Jeff Hooper, chief of police. Mr. Meeger did ask me to come over and just kind of brief you on our police response to that particular property this year. So, since the first of the year, we've had twenty-six calls for service to that property. Those, the ones that are important for this context, specifically, we had ten times that we were requested to come out and check the building. Uh, one, we've taken one report out there for damage to property or vandalism. Two, open doors or open window calls, four suspicious activities and three times that we actually found people on the property. So, typically, when we get a call, we come out there, we drive through the parking lot, lots of times, if there was a person there, suspicious activity, just like lots of times in our job, they may be gone already. But I do know that on six of these particular occasions, we found open doors or open windows that led us to believe that somebody may be squatting in there and we have to search that facility. And that's a significant time and manpower draw on us because it takes multi, you know how big that building is and it takes multiple officers to search that, sometimes up to two or three hours if we want to do a thorough search to make sure nobody's in there. And then we call out code and Izzy's crew to come out and board that building back up. But we can't really board it back up with people in there. And so, when those instances occur, that's a significant draw on our, on our resources. Luckily, it hasn't happened a lot where we actually found somebody had broken in. Uh, but there have been, at least on three occasions, we did find people either in or on the property that weren't supposed to be there, so.
Thank you. It's not good. Well, I guess we'll just continue conversations about how to prevent the drain of police resources because of that property.
And, and we will, uh, I'll, I'll visit with, uh, Mr. Rivera and, uh, uh, the chief and, uh, uh, Mr. Brown, see if there's anything that could be done at this point. Uh, certainly, we can communicate to, um, the owner, uh, concerns and see what, if he has plans on, on the building.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
And just a question, the bills are being ignored, correct?
No, no, they have been paying the bills. So, I think there is, there's one, uh, from July that's outstanding, but when you look at, uh, you know, when we get, it takes a little while for us to get the bill and then we bill it out, so it's probably not that much in arrears. I think there's a very recent bill that hasn't been billed out yet, but otherwise, uh, the bills are being paid.
Okay, well, and I've received a few calls from people that live in that area that feel like that's attracting people they don't want in their area.
I have too. Okay, well, I'll look forward to hearing more from Izzy.
Okay, we'll try to report back to you.
Okay, great. Next item, please.
Item five C, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where items that are not on the agenda can be addressed before the councils. Please come to the podium, state your name and zip code and, uh, limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Diane Cannon, school bus driver for USD three thirteen. There's a few things that I would like to share with the committee. In the last meeting of September sixth, a gentleman shared that bus travel was very safe, not a lot of accidents that involved fatalities. I couldn't agree more, no one wants to hit a school bus full of kids. However, it does happen and rather frequently. Our bus driver Sally stated in the last meeting that she had been hit at the intersection of thirtieth and Lucille. I too was hit from behind last year on September sixteenth. I was in a residential neighborhood west of Plum on thirty-seventh. I had been traveling north on Maple, made the stop there picking up students and made the turn right heading east to go to the next stop at thirty-seventh and Elm. I was at a complete stop with the stop sign out and student loading when a young lady ran into the back of my bus. The sun was the factor, she claimed. I just want to- She could not have been going more than twenty miles per hour, thirty maximum, because I had just been stopped. Her car was totaled. The pictures show the damage to her car at twenty to thirty miles per hour. Her airbag deployed and she was very shaken up. Can you imagine the damage to a car and the people inside hitting a bus when they are traveling at a much faster speed? They would not fare as well as this young lady did. A school bus is a very safe vehicle. The kids and I were not injured at all, I felt a little, and I said, did something just hit us? And I walked to the back of the bus and saw the car under the bus. I was in complete shock of the damage and that she was under the bus, barely a scratch to my bus. The new rule from that day forward was no kids are allowed to sit on the back row. I asked a police officer on scene to take these photos with my phone because bus drivers cannot exit the bus leaving kids alone after an accident. I do travel on very busy streets and it is my fear that I will be stopped and hit again from behind. The year twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, I believe there were four Bueller buses involved in accidents, may have been more. I know four. Two of these accidents occurred on thirtieth street. Thankfully, there were no fatalities, just a lot of damage to vehicles, mostly to cars, buses or tanks. I have always feared someone running my stop sign and possibly hitting one of my kids. Many of them must cross very busy streets to get to the other side. Now, I have to worry about someone hitting me from behind too. Once you experience it, it's hard to forget. Now, a school bus drives completely different than cars do. I invite each and every one of you to ride a school bus with us in the mornings. It is easy to assume that you know how traffic works and how cars will react. But honestly, you must experience this while in a school bus to fully understand what might and might not work. I've been driving for twelve years each street, five days a week, twice a day in my route area. I smile because my foot knows when to come off the gas for the bump coming up. We know the roads, we know our buses and we know how they drive and we are slow, very slow. We are at the mercy of every car out there. There are people that run my stop sign almost daily. This year, I had the best day ever as a driver when a sheriff's officer followed me my entire Plum Creek route. A mom had called them because she witnesses the running of the stop sign and her daughter has to cross the street to go home. They live on fifty-sixth. Of course, no one runs the stop sign when there's a sheriff's car behind you, but that's what made it so great. He did this twice. One less worry, one less stress to worry about that day. Bus driving is very stressful. I'm responsible for these kids' lives. These kids mean so much to me and the other drivers must feel the same way too, or we wouldn't be doing it. I can only hope that everyone can see the need in making all streets as safe as possible for all of us. Yes, I want my bus and my kids to be safe, but I also want the cars to be safe. This is not about a traffic light, it's about safety. It's as simple as that. You can see, you can see what can and does happen. In closing, I would like to present to you the signatures from the bus driver's petition we started. Several drivers and friends went door to door to our parents' homes to discuss this. our parents' homes to discuss this. The Inverness neighborhood said they don't want the light to come back. However, there are neighborhoods out there that reached out to the drivers and asked to sign the petition to keep the light. The office of Matt Brett's law firm reached out to me and asked if they could create an online petition, one that would reach more people. We have just under 1,500 signatures from the online petition, and about 500 signatures from the drivers, from citizens in the community that want to see the light stay. That's 2,000 people. Again, I will state, I'm not here complaining of awful traffic. There are a lot of factors regarding this light. At the last meeting, the gentleman was right when he said buses are on those kinds of roads all over town. Some are even worse. I do think that far more people want the light to stay for the safety of all than those that want to see it not come back.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know some of you go, "Oh, God, here she is." But my name is Sally Davini. I drive a school bus for 313 for over 20 years, closer to 26 years. I am here for the safety of my kids. Like I said last time, I got kind of emotional, but to me, my kids are more important. Diane mentioned that I got hit, and I did not get hit because I was turning. I was going west on 30th. A car was going south on Lucille. That's when we had a stop sign. The car did, like I said, what I call a California stop. He hit me and kept on going. He didn't even stop to see if anybody was on the bus. It was a hit and run. So, like I said, it might have happened with the light, it might not have. But to me, if he didn't stop for that stop, if he seen a stop sign, he didn't stop. It was a stop sign. I mean, how many, probably likes, and I know I've done it, too. I've come and I've kind of tapped and went off. But now, you know, it's, it's the safety of the kids. And we got kids walking south from the school to cross 30th. And we, the bus drivers call each other if we see kids walking on the ditches. We've had four or five kids walking south, and now we got some walking north. And thank God, there was a sheriff patrol in a pickup. One day, he was, he turned, went north, and he seen some kids walking. So, there are kids walking. The other day, I seen one crossing the street on Inverness. And we had a gentleman up here that lives on Inverness, and he said he didn't want to see the streetlights, and blah, blah, blah. That's fine. That's his opinion. Everybody's got their opinion. But I wonder how he feels. Afterwards, we were talking, and we had a bus driver told me that he, they were told to turn on Inverness, to go to Spyglass, turn on Spyglass to go to Lucille. I wonder how he would feel if all of a sudden, all of us bus drivers would turn on his street. He might change his mind. Like I said, it's his opinion that matters to him. That's fine. Everybody's got their own opinion. I'm not saying we don't. Because I got my opinion, and you really don't want to hear what I really, really think, you know? But to me, a stoplight is very, very important. We had a girl the other day. I was going, and like I said, I'm the only bus that turns left in the afternoon. They, we were told that there's a lot of buses. Well, I was going, and I was moving up to 30th. We had a little, well, to me, all kids are still little. We had a little girl. She was looking both ways, and I think she got tired of waiting, and she just ran. Can you imagine if a car would have came and hit her? Can you imagine? Who's going to go and tell the parents their child is laying on this road? Who's going to go tell her, besides the police? That's a hard job for them to go, and I wouldn't want to see it. And really, if I would have seen, if that girl would have got hit, even if it's not my student, I might have said, okay, like I told you before, enough is enough. I wouldn't want to be the one witnessing a student get hit. And yeah, you guys need to have your surveys, you need to think about the money, and this and this and that. I agree. But on this column, we have our kids, kids crossing, people coming. And they're not giving us time to go and all that. When we leave Lucille, go out, and going to go on 30th, we are under the 20 mile an hour speed limit. And by the time we get our buses, even though there's a big space, you don't realize how long it takes for us to turn. It takes a while. If we had a light, it would give us time to really get the turn. Because I've teased with my kids, and I tease with them, and if we sit there for a while, I go, "Okay, close your eyes, I'm going." And they start laughing, and you know, but I wouldn't do that. But I gotta interact with my kids, and they've known me all these years, you know? And I don't know. To me, I cannot see, not putting that light up there. That was my biggest downfall of the year, when we were told that light was going. Because I could just see everything just kind of crumbling a little bit. I hate to be, oh, downfall all the time. I'm not. But like I said, on this column, we got our kids' safety. On this column, we got the survey, we got the money, we got this, and we got that, and that. So, this is important, but to me, this is more important. You gotta stop and think. What if it was your kid crossing the street? What if it was, if your grandparents, what if it was your grandchild? What was, what if it's your neighbor's kids? Stop and think, what if? What if? You know? Like I said, we got two columns. Yes, survey's important and everything. But come on, people, help us, please. Oh, I was gonna say-
Thank you.
Put the light up. We would love to have that light up. And we were told that the last meeting, that buses were diverted to go north. But the buses were already going north. There was no diversion. That you have five mini buses, four or five mini buses going north. You have five big buses going north. Yeah, going to the right is great, but you gotta stop and think. When you get to 43rd, then they gotta turn left. So before long, 43rd and Lucille's going to be the same thing.
I think we, what the direction the council has given staff is to do the study so that we can determine if we have greater safety justification to put the light up. So we really appreciate your input, and we are going to be studying it more-
Right.
-and make decisions based on the safety warranted through engineering and other standards. So-
So, you know, like I said, I'm all, I'm all for safety. I'm for my kids. My kids on my bus, no. I will fight for them tooth and nail. And if anybody gets on them, you know, you don't do that. I might get on them, but nobody else will. So, anyway, that's all I got to say. And I forgot to tell you guys thank you last time. I just walked off because I was upset.
That's okay, Sally. Well, thank you for your service and your, your insights here. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Let's call the next item, please.
Item 6, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hyros State Carvallo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7A, consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district for the Hutchinson Rod Run.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Before we approve the resolution for the rod run, we're going to have Jim Groover come up and tell you about his event.
Great. Let's hear it.
I've got a really valuable item here for you guys. I know you'd never get any presents up here, so maybe I'd give you something that-
Thank you.
Kind of signifies what our-
Thank you.
What our show is going on.
Thanks so much for, for having us again. 15 years, it's hard to believe, but we keep stacking them up every year. I don't know, I don't want to take a lot of time either. We've got a lot of new things going on this year. We've got a great collaboration going with Hutch Rec. They're helping us out a lot with, with some of our entertainment and different things going on. So basically, we're the same thing we've done for the last 14 years. We're just trying to attract as many people down, and, and again, praying for, for nice, dry weather. So I don't have anything else particularly, unless you guys have questions, I'd, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Where is this going? Where do you have it at?
It's the exact same place, same format, same event district that we've had now for quite a few years.
Okay.
But yeah, it's basically from 3rd Street to B Street on Main, and then, then we go about a half a block each direction on 1st Street, and about a block each direction on, on A Street.
Reason I ask, one time we was at the Fairgrounds, am I right? One time it was at the Fairgrounds, right?
We did in 2010, actually. We went, we did two shows that year, actually. We did one at the Fairgrounds, July 4th weekend. Did not have very good luck. We had nine inches of rain on Saturday. And, and we turned around and did another show that year in October again.
Yep, exactly. So technically, you're right. This is 16 shows that we've done. So.
Any questions for Jim? Well, Jim, I know this is a really popular fall event every year, and thank you for the tremendous amount of work that goes into putting it on. So it's a lot of fun, a lot of things for families to go out and do that weekends.
And definitely, we want to thank the city. The city has always been really great with helping us with, obviously barricade signs, electrical issues. We set our sound towers up every year. Those guys got that down to a fine art in an hour's time. We've got everything set up first thing on Friday morning. So they do a great job with that.
Oh, fantastic.
And appreciate it.
Thanks for that feedback.
So council, if you'd approve the resolution for the special entertainment district, we'd be finished with this.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing the Hutchinson Rod Run September 30th, 2022 through October 1st, 2022, as a special event pursuant to City Code Section 18801, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that. Good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hyros State Carvallo.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 8A, consider fraternal order of police memorandum of understanding for 2023.
Good morning, Council. Tom Sanders, Human Resources Director. Happy to be with you this morning to present the 2023 memorandum of understanding with our FOP bargaining unit. Negotiations got started in March. We had six sessions with the FOP, and we were able to come to agreement on August 9th. Changes and modifications include Article 7, which adds new indemnification language, which holds the city harmless should there be any disputes related to payroll deduction of union dues. The economic package includes new wage scales in Appendix B that will be phased in based on the employee's length of service or time and job. The officer scale will move 6.85%, and the bottom of the sergeant scale will move 6.6%. And there's going to be also, at the first of the year, additional pay adjustments, recognizing past performance in years 2019 and 2021. Those increases will vary from 3.5% to 0.75%. Also, the merit metrics in Appendix C has been updated to reflect the overall budget of 3.5%. Other compensation enhancements for the FOP bargaining unit includes the addition of special duty, duty pay and the amount of $1.25 per hour for those employees that are regularly assigned to the detectives, special operations, or crisis response team. And then also additional paid leave under Article 19, holiday leave, which reflects the city's addition of the Martin Luther King Holiday starting in 2023. And then the last revision is under Article 23, Section 1, which covers military leave. And this has been edited and reworded to clarify the city's non-statutory pay differential program that is, and its administration for those employees that are members of the Guard or other military reserve units. And that's basically the changes for next year. We would really like to thank the FOP bargaining unit in West Vaughn. It's, you know, it's been a very difficult, challenging time for the city and for employees. And we worked a lot to kind of get to agreement, but we did it. And, you know, I think this is a really good and fair contract. So, any questions?
Questions from the council? I know we've worked on this quite a bit over the last couple months. If not, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the FOP Lodge Number 7 bargaining unit for 2023, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Well, thanks for your work on this, Tom. Let's call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hyros State Carvallo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item 9, report of city officials.
Okay, let's start with you, Sarah.
Um, I don't have anything this morning.
Okay. What about you, John?
Well, I just want to say that recognizing the rod run and the Fall Fest on the weekend after next, and then I believe the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner is October 1st, if I remember correctly. That's an important event. I wanted to make sure that's mentioned. That's all I have.
Okay, what do you have, Greg?
Southwest Brick Town Fiesta. Councilman Garza will be dancing at that. It is this Saturday at three or four o'clock. There's going to be bouncy houses and vans. So please put that on your calendar. Last year, we had a great time. This year, we are going to have plenty of food there. We ran out of food last year. Should have plenty of food this year. I have received a couple calls about the landmark at 5th and Main. Just upset that it's an eyesore, and it, this, anyway. So I explained that it is for sale. Any news on that, any, anything- day, when you leave, it's going to be at the Fine Arts Center. When you leave, you'll vote in a voting box. The kids will have their first time to get to vote in Hutchinson, Kansas. And I'm looking forward to it. It's one of my pet peeves and it's going real well. I have a good board. I advise you board. And the end of the application is October 6. We extended it to October 6. So we can get more applications. And so I have some briefs here, some paperwork if somebody wants to pick one up and take a look more about the youth council. It's going really well. So I'm looking forward to October 22nd where the kids get to be candidates and debate a little bit on what's going on. Also, the Lincoln School Project, we're going to have a meeting tonight at 5:30 at the Emdale Center. This is where Southeast District and the Lincoln will get together and will make some decisions together. I think what the biggest thing is to say we stay together or we're going to spread. We're going to make that decision tonight. So everybody who's listening, who's interested in that, we're going to have our first neighborhood meeting with Adam at the Rec Commission. I'm glad I've been at this for a couple of years now and finally we're going to get this going.
What are the boundaries for that one?
I'm going to find that out tonight, too. All that stuff will be settled tonight. So if you're interested, please come. We need all, I mean, pushing and pushing. Don't let me down. If you're listening to me, please come to this meeting. It's very important. We're going to find out what the boundaries are and see what the...
What area particularly?
That's what I'm, I don't know. I mean, Southeast District is my district's.
Yeah, it's big, though. So I didn't know.
Yeah, my district. And also the Lincoln School Project, the Lincoln School. We're all going to be together and we're going to make some decisions on the boundaries and stuff like that.
All right.
So that's going to be great. What else here? As he knows, I'm real excited about this weekend, Saturday, because I love dancing. I love the Mexican music. So I get out there and have fun. I look for that every year, by the way. Other than that, I think that's all I got. Mayor?
Great. Thank you. I just had one item and it's something that I've kind of emailed back and forth with Paul about, but I continue to get questions. So I thought maybe we could just discuss it so people know. The high schoolers at Hutch High are wanting to paint parking spots like is done at Trinity and Bueller, and we're unable to allow them to do that. But I was just wondering, Paul, if you could kind of explain why?
Well, because it's the sports arena parking lot that they're talking about. And it's used by multiple entities. It's used by Hutchinson Community College. We have a lease with USD 308 for the east parking lot, but it's not exclusive. And so we have to have it available to everyone, including 308, HCC, and everyone that has an event at the sports arena. So no, we can't take them and paint them and decorate them. And it's also a problem with maintaining the parking lines in the lot. And you can't have a reserved parking space because it's not yours, it's ours, everyone's. It's a public parking lot. And so, no, you can't do what they do at Trinity or some of those places. It's just, it's, if Hutch High had their own exclusive parking lot, then maybe it's a possibility with 308. But for the city, it's municipal and it has to be available to everyone.
Okay, thank you. This is why I call Paul the Fun Killer. But it makes sense. It is a public parking lot and it's just a different scenario. And I think it's just hard for the high schoolers to kind of understand that when they see their friends getting to do that, you know, kind of fun thing.
You could use sidewalk chalk.
Well, we could use one of, I mean, 308 could use one of their parking lots for seniors, but they have such limited parking lots that...
Justin is not here to defend himself. He would not be pleased if you're marking up his parking lot.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your insights there. So what do you have, Gary? Welcome back, by the way. We missed you.
Yeah, thank you. It was nice to get away, but it's also great to come back. So just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, with regard to the city manager search, we're still scheduled. That notice, that advertisement has been out for a while now. We have several applicants there. We're still looking at Tuesday, October 11th is the date when the recruiter will be here to, excuse me, meet with the council, select finalists. And so we're still staying on track with that. So it's really encouraging right now. I think he's reached out to several people and then several people have seen the advertisements. So I think you'll have a good group of candidates to consider. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I think I have maybe mentioned to you before about cost share grant that the city has partnered with the county to submit a cost share grant to KDOT. For, in our case, well, their project takes in resurfacing of the bridge across the Arkansas River, basically connected to the Woody Sea. Ours takes into the resurfacing of the Woody Sea project from the river bridge to Avenue C. It also takes in some safety measures, you know, adding some guard rails and things like that. So by doing that, we believe that it will enhance the ability of both entities to receive funding. And what amounts to is that if we were to be, receive this grant, it would cover about 42% of our project, 42% of their project. So it could be a real enhancement to our funding for those particular projects. So I think it's good cooperation between the city and the county on getting that done. And they can be done at the same time. We could look at saving some money with regard to traffic control and coordinating that project. So anyway, I just wanted to report on that. And I think that because the council had also asked us to look into, you know, you've received questions or inquiries about providing water to Yoder and perhaps to South Hutchinson. We are working with a water consultant on that particular issue and we'll report back to you, making sure we have enough water rights, not only now, but in the future.
Wonderful. Thank you.
On October 11th, what time do we do this?
Well, I don't think we've actually set a time, but it'll probably be in the evening, like at 6 o'clock when you normally have your evening meetings.
Yeah, and just a heads up, unfortunately, I have to go to DC that night. So I may, I probably won't be at that meeting, even though I thought I would be. But that's okay.
I want to say one more thing?
Yeah.
I'd like to put a shout out to our youth sports. Hutch High and all of them are doing a great job. If you have a chance, go watch them. I go watch Hutch High every Friday and I have a great time and they're doing a great job. So all the Trinity and all of them are doing a great job. So if you ever get a chance, go watch our youth play. We have a lot of talent in Hutchinson with the youth. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Gary, did you have any other items?
I don't.
Can you advise on, or Tom, on how long we will need in this first executive session?
Well, I think that in talking with Tom, he thought it might take about 45 minutes.
Now we have two Fun Killers.
Yeah, I know. We could try 30 and see if we can get through it, but it depends, a lot of it depends on how many questions it might be.
Why don't we try 30?
Okay.
We can extend.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to recess until 10:45?
I move to recess until 10:45.
Second.
And just to clarify, we did have media ask about this last time. This is for employer employee negotiations exception KSA 75-4319B3 in order to discuss issues related to 2023 contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. And was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hyrum State Carvallo?
Yes.[1142.23]
...
Does somebody have the agenda where they can read off the...
I can read it.
And how, uh, how long do you think we'll need here?
Uh, let's, let's try thirty minutes.
Okay.
Uh, we are now back in session and the proposed motion for executive session is to recess into executive session pursuant to consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exception, KSA 7543-19B2, in order to discuss issues regarding the transient guest tax. The open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at eleven fifteen AM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyrostate Carvalho?
Yes.